All right, I want a work session of March 20, 2022. It's called the quarter. Madamoral call, please. Mr. Bartowski. Mr. Barbara. Mrs. Favela.
President.
Mr. Itkin.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Man.
President.
Mr. McEnnis.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mrs. Cornell.
Present.
And Mr. Penn. Here, I just want to tell you that Mr. Barbara cannot be here tonight because he is teaching in a class. New Jersey Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and pretend leave to the public bodies, on which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. According to the provisions of this act, Fairlawn Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having a date, time, and place thereof, distributed to the person on approval list, posted on Board of Education straight-up office, and sent to the burning record and the Star Ledger. The announced posting for the work session, board goals, along with the date, time, and place thereof, was distributed on March 3, 2022. The closed work session already took place, we're not going to have another one. And would you join me in a flag still, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nick's going to hand out in case we didn't remember the issue of board goals. Yeah, come on, yeah, right. Okay. As you recall, I asked each board member to give one goal that they thought would be forward to work on this year. And I got nine goals, obviously. And I'm sure it was right then, we're going through them, and I think what we can do is, I believe there were three different board members that said CTE should be one of the goals. So let's do an easy one. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, CTE, as far as what the board is going to do. I know that the administration's working on something right now, planning on their next budget. But so, everybody agree that CTE should be one of the goals? And I'm not sure what form that is yet, but we all agree that that should be something, okay. So we want to keep that off. Just about CTE at this point, we'll get into the rest of them later on, there's a couple of things we're going to discuss. But anybody want to say anything about CTE? I don't know. Need somebody to take notes? All right, let's do this. I think that, I forget which one it was, I dropped my notes in the office, so.
CTE was number two.
Number two.
Two, seven, nine.
Two, seven, and nine, okay. So. Yeah, I guess what exactly we looking to do with CTE? I know Nick has some ideas about different kinds of programs and things like that, but the board wants to support that in some way. I'm not sure exactly how we would do that.
I think, the, okay, everybody hear me, okay? So the board's function at this point, as you develop and establish board goals, is not to get into the granular nitty gritty of the details part of it, really just an overview of what the board goal is. The board would, you know, is looking to encourage explorational CTE programs in Fairlawn. To keep it at like, you know, the 30,000 feet, you know, rather than just getting down to like, how we're going to do it or what we're going to do. So as you're writing, these are the board goals. And I emphasize the board goal part, because this is more of like, just, you know, something that you want to see us work on, look at, or not really us work on, but you work on as well. And we know there's a recurring theme of communication as well, really these were not there yet. But for the CTE, just something as broad as possible, I think, would be my recommendation.
I don't know, but you can hand it first. Why, Julie Mark?
So, I think I will go, can you hear me? Yes. I think I will just call somebody, I'm not sure who it was, who wrote it, I think it was very, almost perfect. Develop a framework to include trade career courses in the curriculum and branch vocational education. The framework should include hands-on classes. Give it.
I think that hands-on classes is sort of wrong language, because not all trades are hands-on. I think it has to be, I actually really like number two, where it states student body, I don't love that it's in college, but considering alternatives to post-secondary education.
Mark?
That's, that's exactly how I wrote the proposed original.
Number two. Thank you.
The question I have is, are we going to put any kind of timeframe on any of this?
No.
Well, I, me personally, I wouldn't agree. Listen, these are, these are overarching goals, you know, to restrict yourself to, not that you're saying this, but by the end of the 2023 school year, I think it's just, you know, an overarching goal that the board's going to work on, or the administration of the district's goal. But I don't know, that's just my own opinion.
I would think that there should be some kind of point where you can say that certain things should be developed at that time, rather than, because this could delay for the next five years, unless you're really forcing oneself to really accomplish those tasks, which would give you fewer time, those are my thoughts.
Anybody else, any thought?
Yes.
Why?
Yes, I agree with Mark. Oh, I think we should put some kind of time, time goal. Now, goals should be smart. Most of us have heard this acronym. And T in the smart stands for time bound. Again, it doesn't have to be implemented, it could be develop a framework. But there should be a time, let's develop a framework by the end of this calendar year. After all, these are annual goals.
Anyone else? Joe?
Well, so to that point. Thank you. To that point, excuse me. These are just this year's goals, correct? For the board, like, do you make these every year?
Yes.
Okay. So then I guess we should find something for each goal we make that is an aim for this year. If we're making a goal for this year, there should be some reason that we're making that goal for this year. So, and you agree that there has to be something to achieve within it?
But then rather than a date, why wouldn't we actually make something measurable? So be a little bit more clear. We know that our date is a one-year timeframe. So let's consider it's making a broad, but measurable. And that could be, and I'm just throwing at you, Mark, I repeat number two.
Yes.
So I actually really like some of this language, but create, like, even if, even if it was to create a baseline for the development of what trades or career awareness courses the student body is interested in, it could be taking data as simple as what is our population looking for?
So, I just want to clarify, I've been throwing some stuff up there, if you want to, I think, look at it. But this, these goals are not just to be completed by the June 2022.
Correct.
Correct, I just want to make sure we're all.
Right, it would be a one-year contract.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I just, I threw it up, the board had as committed to develop a framework of expanding career technical education programs. Infernal public schools plan for expanding our programs will be completed by the end of 22, 23 school year.
I'm sorry, the way it's raised, I'm just confused. By the end of the school year, will complete writing out the plan or implement the plan that?
The plan will be completed, the plan, not the actual building or curriculum.
I understand that, okay. So, the goal will effectively become 18-months goal, rather than 12-months goal?
Uh, yeah, I guess you're right, yeah, yeah, but I.
Well, it's, the reason why, it's a little, it depends on when the board sets the goals. I mean, and that's why I just wanted to jump in and say, we're clearly not setting them for the end of this month, or the end of this school year, because that's only less than three months away at this point. But you know, we're getting closer, you know, you're cool looking at it that way. And, you know, it would be a year and a couple of months.
Why, can I say something else? You look like Dave, but if you don't, that's fine. Okay, Mark?
I'm a little confused on here, I'm not a definite what was said, I just want some clarification. If these are board goals, and they're starting in April or March, why are they starting so late? Why are we not sorting them in August? From August through Ju, through July or so? I don't understand, and these are supposed to be really proposed to us by the state, what to do, correct?
Yes.
So why are they starting now, rather than, like I said?
Because this is where the board is meeting to go over board goals. And I'm not saying that in a funny or fresh way, it's just, this is the conversation that, when are we going to have a meeting about board goals? And finally, came around to having the meeting, it was, let's wait until the new board members are sworn in. And that's kind of why, that's why there's a couple of different ways of doing it. You could do it in September or August to your point, or you could do it when the new board members are sworn in in January, whereas we're getting to it now. So there's two different ways, kind of like a calendar year, school year, academic year, however you want to look at it. Boards do it different ways.
So then, when we're giving these timelines of 22 to 23, I think we should really be clear as to where it starts and where it ends.
Well, it starts now, and it would be end, would be ended the end of next school year, which is 16.
But are they going to start now? We're drafting them right now, so by the time these go into effect, let's say we have another, you know, then the end of April. So we really are at the end of our school year. So maybe it would be 13, you know, months rather than 12.
I don't care how many months, I just, to me, there's no clarification as to where it begins and where it ends, and why it's starting now. And that's no insult.
No, no, I understand, I understand. Why?
Just as a point of information, when we had retreat back in September, when Matt Lee presented to us, as far as I remember, Matt said that there are kind of two models. Sometimes board goals are done from July to June, and sometimes from January to December. Matt Lee recommended that we have goals from January to December, because that's when members get elected. So according to Matt Lee, the perfect time to set goals would be in January, just as a point of information.
You know, I, I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but I'm also after to reiterate, these are, these technically are not the administrator's goals or the school goals. These are your goals. So if you want to talk about fostering communication in the district, and working with the community, if you want to talk about, we would like to see more CTE programs, you almost have to kind of leave it at that, because then at that point, then administration and the teachers and the staff will come up with a plan of what it looks like. But if you, you know, so I know you want to get into the granular, but you have to be careful, because these are the board goals. Otherwise, then they turn into the district goals, and we already have district goals. So there's, you know, Matt Lee has shared that with us in training as well. If you look at other district goals, a lot of times they revolve around communication, the calendar, negotiations, you know, things along those lines that are going to emphasize, not so much getting into like, nitty-gritty details of what happens in and out of the school on a daily basis.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, Bob?
I just want to say that I'm fine with this timeline, as long as it's set. I'm okay with this.
Yeah, I am too, only because it makes sense the way, you know, because we're not, we're in March, we're not in January. We're not going to wait till July to go into next year, so we're either three months late or three months early, depending on how you look at it, so. I'm sorry, Julie? Okay, so we good with this as the first goal? Okay, good, all right. Second was, there was a couple of, talking about building community trust and better communications with the community. And that was at least twice, mine was three times. So I think maybe that, anybody have any problem with Julie?
So I'm going to put it out there, when I wrote May now, it's clear, I don't think it's our role to build opportunities for the community to share. I think the community knows how to access our administration, how to access our principals. For me, what I just written was about how we can model communication for the community. And I don't believe that we are doing a good job of that, because we're not following the chain of command. So if we're not following that chain of command by respecting one another's communication and respecting the communication between ourselves and our administration, then why would the rest of the community feel like they have to do that either? So I don't actually, I'm not particularly comfortable with goal number, the goal submitted for number one, I don't think that that's in our purview. I think that is something that should be left to the administration. I think if we're going to create a goal about communication, it's about how we are going to work for being more respectful and more open in our own communication as nine humans who are aboard of one.
Okay, let, okay, all right.
Just to be clear, there is one goal, which was not, I've just answered number one and number nine, about communication between board and committee. And there were, I believe, three goals, which I believe were number four, six, and eight, that talk about communication within the board.
Okay, so.
Four, six, and eight are about committees. I think that's a difference between the communication that we are having as a very divided board and how we are communicating as small committees versus a committee on the whole. I don't agree, and we can agree to disagree on that. But I think that we have an issue with how our committees are run. And I think there are a multitude of people who have a multitude of challenges related to our committee. Mark's trying to use you as an example.
All right.
Mark has always been very open about the fact that he does not feel like the committees are working. And he'd like to go back to a committee at home. I don't, I have an issue with how the committees are being formed, and how they're functioning, and how the development of the committees are happening. But I don't want to lose the committees yet. I'm committed to trying to make them redeveloped, so that there's equity amongst the committees. So I think that, I'm using us as an example, because I think that's a conversation, that can be one goal. The actual conversation of how we communicate as a board should be completely separate. The way we speak to one another, the way we present at our board meetings is a problem. So how do we learn to treat others respectfully and with kindness, so that the students in our community know that that is how they should treat one another, right? We're one miles to students in our community, but also one miles to the community members, our staff, our faculty. So to me, those are two separate challenges that we have as a board, that are under the topic of communication.
Thank you, Julie. Rita, you want to say something?
No.
Oh, what did you add in?
I think we both can help with whatever.
Okay. Okay, so then, thank you for sifting that down to, what I'm hearing is, we want to go over the committee structure. Okay, that is a perfectly acceptable, affordable goal. There's been an issue, we should revisit it. What, go ahead.
You may want to just leave number eight as a goal, just leave number eight as the goal alone. Just, you know, to work on a committee structure so that it serves the board more effectively, if you would like. I can make a recommendation, because back to, you know, Mark's point earlier, that it's difficult often to set a goal now, and then the school year's over in 2025. So you, as we're setting these goals with the 2022, 2023 deadline, you may want to say that we're going to set this goal, number eight, if you want to give it a timeline, maybe over the summer, not that you want to meet, but maybe you want to have one meeting to talk about committees for the next school year. Because even though they'll change in January, at least you're looking at a committee structure through a whole academic school year. You know what you're dealing with, and then you could also get to that issue in January, if the board, when the board turns. Whatever you want to say, so you can say, work on a committee structure, so that it serves the board more effectively for the beginning of the 22, 23 school year. And it gives you time to work that out over the next six months or so.
No, I agree, I agree, just, I guess the other question is, what we're doing is revamping committees. Do we want to do it just us, the board? Do we want to have Matt Lee involved in it? Do we want to get maybe, maybe John Kamagno? He's willing to come in and discuss these kinds of things with us? So is there a sense of how we want to do this, other than just the nine of us, you know, talking about it? Do we want to get some kind of input from an interested third party? Not a disinterested third party, but interested third party? I, sorry. Yeah, Mark?
I was going to say, maybe it should just be the nine members. A lot of current times, what they say will influence, influence our decision, yet they're really not in the heat of what we're doing. I know they've been in the past, but times have changed also. And different communities react differently. So a lot of times, as I said, they're influenced by what people say. I think we should hear what we have to say, and how it affects us, you know, specifically.
Okay.
And that's my thought.
Anybody else, suppose?
I do not disagree. I think every community is different. The only thing I was going to say is, I really believe that, what works, you hear, well, they have a committee structure like this, and we do this. Every community is so unique in their needs, and every board is unique in how they operate. But I was going to say, if we're going to have somebody, I would recommend maybe our attorney, who could sit there, maybe guide us, knowing our community and our board and some of the struggles that we maybe had, rather than New Jersey school boards, who we continue to do every single year, who we continue to have this conversation every single year. And I mean no disrespect to Matt Lee, I have these highest regards of him. But I think that at this point, you know, it hasn't been working for us, or we're still having these conversations. So if we're still having these conversations, it means we have to do something differently. So I don't have an issue, or it's really, you do it alone, or have a facilitator like our attorney, who I feel like has been working well for us lately.
Anybody else, Mike?
Yeah, I just think that at this point in time, we've gone around with this so much that there should be a disinterested or interested third party to kind of, not set a straightie, just be there to bounce stuff off of that isn't amongst the nine of us, because obviously, it doesn't always work that way. And I would agree, I don't always agree on it being the attorney, as opposed to Matt Lee, but in this case, I agree with everything that Nick just said.
Rita?
Does the school board have other people that maybe can come and talk to us about different committees? Do I know this, Matt, do you have other people that can?
So, yes, but this is not your region, but there are other companies out there, other than school boards. So if we didn't want to use our, because there's, I don't want to say there's a ton, but there's definitely other, you know, companies who do this, who would come in and sit with us and try to work with us, if we wanted to go away from school boards and utilize a different company.
I guess they, that costs money, and I think we need to be more cognizant, or probably spend a bit of money. So I, I personally think Matt Lee is great, but if we can get another back, so he's completely like new, and look a fresh eye, sometimes a different person that sees something from a different eye, was like, oh, you guys are doing this job, and you're like, ah, sounds like it's different. So I think school boards is awesome, they're training their people, but I think we need someone from school boards, or someone who's had worked with us before, to see a different point of view. That's my.
I don't know if they do that, but I guess we can, I'm not, I'm not a big candidate, I don't know if they do it, but we can, it's certainly something to consider. All right, Julie and Cindy?
I might go back to what Mark said. I think at this point, we just redeveloped our policy on our committees, and I don't necessarily know that we need someone to come in and tell us the views of John and Yonk of what committees we should have. I think the nine of us need to sit down and talk about what's working and what's not working. We just had a conversation that we're committed to this, this small committee structure, but what committees are working, what committees are not? How we're, how these, how each member of a small committee is being chosen? How the, you know, head of said committee is being chosen? Not necessarily about what committees we're going to have and what committees we're not, but actually how to redevelop these, these small groups of people, so they're, everyone on the board feels that there's equity. And I don't think that comes from a conversation with Matt Lee or anybody else. It comes from us sitting down and talking to one another.
I think, you may laugh at me, but hear me out. To Julie's point, this may be an opportunity for us to come together during the summer and do something fun together, and maybe work and talk about things that work and things that aren't working, and then go from there. I mean, we can make it a board retreat that we do it together. And maybe it's been too long that we haven't gotten together and, you know, did something like this, where that's the only business we talk about. It doesn't have to be a weekend, you can do it during the week, whatever. But it may just be an opportunity for us to just have a casual meeting and talk about it, do like our own board retreats on the committee structure. Just throwing it out there.
Cindy?
I just wanted to say that if you're getting different stories from different school, uh, New Jersey school board members, there's a big problem there. You're going to get the same answers, because that's what the training is about. I mean, New Jersey school boards is built on individuals that have their own opinion, and just because he's our rep, he's got this opinion, but then if you get the Passaic County rep, he's going to have a total set of different rules. They all run under the New Jersey school board rules, so I don't see where going out of who our field rep is, is a good idea. And I also think it's kind of insulting to our rep.
Okay, well, I think what I'm hearing is that we want to try and do this amongst ourselves, in a less formal, more relaxed atmosphere, when we can just be a little bit less rigid in our thinking. So, what, did I say here? Did you say here?
No, I was actually pointing to what I brought up.
Oh, I'll put you right on the board.
Whether we go with school boards and attorney or by ourselves, this goal does not tie us to any of them.
All right, but I would like, I would like to change that, if somebody's there with me. We figure this out by the end of 22, the end of the calendar year 2022, so it's in place for next year. Because this is, this is, we could do it in a meeting, or maybe two.
By the end of the calendar.
By the, by the end of 2022.
I meant for the beginning of it, so you were saying the same thing, but it didn't work that way. By, you were right, for the beginning of December 24.
No, no. The end of 2022, calendar year.
December.
Yeah, December, right. Easier way to say it. All right, so what I'll do is. Okay, good, so that's goal number two. We're all good with that? Okay. And I'll talk to Nick, and we'll get some things together, and we'll do that. All right, what else?
How many goals are we aiming for?
I, I, yeah, I think, I think three is enough. I mean, you don't want to, you want to have so many that, you know, we're constantly meeting and trying to do things, and then nothing gets done, so.
Can you get a consensus as to how many goals we want, though? Because that determines which ones we prioritize.
Right. Okay.
I think we have one or two topics left. The demographic study, I mean, we're the third-class base for the impact on expansion of our community, and then communication as a whole.
There's trouble.
Right.
All right, so.
Communication, that's right.
Let's talk about the, the facilities now. I think we're pretty much on our way to that. So we have the, the market research report is on its way, right?
Yes, I believe by April 15th, their proposal was 90 days, correct, John? We should have it by April 15th. We should have it by April 15th?
Yes, um, you could get an email from him saying by April 15th.
Which goal was that? Which number was that? Does anyone remember? Okay, well, once we get the demographic report, what, what exactly is the board supposed to do with it? I know the administration's supposed to do it, but...
From your speaking, there are two possibilities what the demographic report could say. One possibility, the report would say, we're fine, we have the space to house the students for the foreseeable future. Then we just say yay, we're done. The other possibility, the report would say, we're not fine. With, uh, influx of new students, we do not have enough real estate. Well, then the board should get together and think, what do we do now? That's the big deal.
Okay, so the goal is to review demographic report of the administration and then decide what the next step is?
And if necessary, the report calls for, for some risks, yeah, we should develop the next steps, what do we do now? Some framework, some next steps.
Now, we need some time with something, so hold on a second.
The one our board goal should be to fix this line.
Saving money. Get up and move it.
The line is actually fine for motion sensitive.
Yeah, get up and move, start dancing.
Maybe I should say appropriate things, Natalie.
And this would be a goal for, if we got it on April 15th, we could figure it out by the end of this school year? Because the report's gonna say what the report says.
Yes, I mean, if, if the report says we're fine, then we're done. If the report says we're not fine, then it depends what it says, and how long it will take us to develop the next steps.
Right, there. So, I agree with you, look at what Nick wrote. Are you okay with that language? Do you wanna, you wanna add the time that we're gonna finish by the end of the school, this school year?
We can't ensure that the facilities are gonna be adequate.
Well, if you listen.
That's not our goal, is it? Is that more administrative?
Well, maybe the deck.
That is in your hands?
I don't know, just, I'm just typing.
May I get my question?
No, you better show up by hammer.
And, and the board in conjunction with the administration will develop a plan to make sure that... And it also, I don't know if we should throw it here, or assume it implicitly, that we may get all the students who fled from Ukraine. That's also a risk.
Right, and I know Nick was following, I don't know if there's anything going on with that, but...
Yeah, and I don't know if we should make it a poor goal, or just assume it implicitly, just something I can write.
Joe? Joe?
So I'm just slightly confused with this, because does it make sense to make a goal for something that might not even, you know?
And, or the fact that we're just gonna address it, even if there is a problem? How do you run out, and you just simply ignore it, like, oh, it was a board goal, sorry, overcrowding. Like, we're gonna address, I, I, my recommendation would see for a third goal is to see it more of a goal around communication and trust, and working together as a board. We're going to address and review the demographic study. We're gonna welcome any refugees coming out of Ukraine or anywhere else in the world with open arms. If we have an overcrowding problem, we are going to address it and bring it to the board. You will hear from it, but I think there's a bigger conversation about communication and trust that I think we should work on.
Okay, so why don't we table that? It's gonna be, the administration's gonna get those, they'll have a meeting about it in April or May. Okay, so that will not be, so the last one is public communication and trust. Now, like, go ahead.
There, I'm not sure. It seems that there are two things. One is communication and trust within the board, and then there are these communications between the board and the public. Which one?
Right, well, the way I, the way I'm taking it is that the problem with communication and trust with the board is, I think, tied to the committee structure and the way we do it. And I think a lot of people are not happy with it, and I think if we get that resolved, we'll, it'll be much easier for us to all gel as a team, so to speak.
I agree with you.
So I, I think that, so that, that part, the board part, I think when we do the committee stuff, we'll probably be, you know, fall into that. Okay, so then, I, 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 I don't necessarily agree that, uh, that we don't communicate with the public, or that we're not trusted by the public. There are certain people that don't agree with us, that don't think we do anything right, um, and that we should be much more open about everything all the time, but that's not how the Board of Education works. Because the public certainly has input, the public certainly should be emailing us, talking to us, telling what their thoughts are, but to make a formal rap session, as we used to call them back in the day, when we just all sit around and just, you know, just say whatever came to your mind, that's not how the board should work. And I, I'm not sure what this goal would even look like, or how we would get there. So saying that, Mark?
No, Chris, I just want to...
No, no, I'm done.
I, I, I don't think that we need to build community trust and understanding. What I think we need to do is build understanding and trust amongst ourselves. That should be the goal.
That's it.
Joe?
So, I have actually written goal number one, so I'll just mention that. Um, and I think the way I saw it, and of course, I wrote this two months ago or so now, so my view has definitely changed since sitting on the board, um, but I think our trust among ourselves reflects the community's trust in us. So I definitely agree that the communication among ourselves and the trust among ourselves, if we strengthen that, then maybe the community will look at us differently and feel more engaged with us there. Um, I do believe, uh, and that's just from my point of view, that some sort of dialogue once a year, or once every so often, where community members can voice their concerns, not at all community, because this isn't the best form for that, um, would be beneficial for us. Sitting on that side versus this side is very different, um, and at times it feels very disconnected. I think many members on this board, we all come from very different paths, we come from different areas in the community, and we are clearly advocating for our, our areas and our knowledge here, that's what we're meant to do, we come together, we advocate for what we know, um, but it's not always cohesive, and I think having some community, um, input into that would help the cohesiveness of that. And just one last thing, and I do believe the administration, that is largely the administration's role, and they do an incredible job with it. They're also very visible across social media, um, putting out newsletters, I think they're doing a great job. You don't see the board meditate this all too much, uh, and that's just my perspective. Of course, I'm sure COVID impacted that as to what board members could attend, and hopefully that can change this kind of way, because I would like to see us more engaged in the community in that sense as well, just going to events, having people know who we are, because when I was running, people did not know who was on the board of education, and I found that absolutely crazy.
Joe?
So I hear you. Um, I came on the board as someone unknown, like, his or her brand new school system, and I saw me, what I always had been on our board. I think it's really unfair to say that there are people on our board who are not very active. Um, Mike is everywhere. Yes, he's a good example. He is at every event he could possibly attend. Um, he's very available, he is at tons of sporting events, he's at community events. I feel like to say that in a generalization is kind of unfair, and I, and I'm just using his example, like, Mike and I had our, I mean, he's an example, but like, during COVID, it was really hard to put yourself out there. You know, I very often share about community events that are happening. I'm very fortunate that I find out about those events, often from the school system. My kids come home and tell me. So being available, like, don't disagree, but like, there was something in all of our folders last week about the Memorial Day parade. How many of us are walking in the memorial parade as a board?
I would hope all of us as a board.
But that's, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Last year I was the only one to say, wow.
We don't, we don't actually have opportunities to have those conversations, and I think that that's where we're going to build trust in creating meaningful and purposeful dialogue. Because I think that's where this goal should be started. We are not communicating with one another, but anything but the things that are on agenda that people are passionate about. And that's not, that shouldn't be the only thing we discuss as a board, as a whole board. There are opportunities for us to be very cohesive. So I wrote something here that kind of pulled from a couple of things. I wrote that, improve trust amongst board members by creating more opportunities for meaningful and purposeful dialogue between trustees. And then I used, for example, by holding more work sessions. And those work sessions could be opportunities for us to have honest dialogue, or just opportunities for us to get involved. Last year, I was the only person who attended the graduation of our class who graduated from their associate's degree.
Or maybe not.
Yeah, thank you. Um, that was incredible, and we all have different things that we can and cannot do. But like, if there are opportunities where we are purposely reaching out to another, whether we're sending, who's going to this? Who can be available? Even if we're just going in small purposes committees, because that's where people are gonna learn, and I don't mean committees of, like, our actual work committees, like, hey, I'm gonna reach out to Cindy and Joe, like, hey, do you guys wanna go with me to this as the representatives of the board? Because that's where you're gonna start seeing our face.
I, I, I just threw something up there. Board of Ed will make a more, and I want to come back and speak about it, make a more concerted effort to attend school-wide events such as National Honor Society, end of the year moving up ceremonies, graduation, school musicals, et cetera. I can't stress enough that I agree with everything that every one of you is saying. And you heard me speak about this there tonight, um, about reading, um, reading First America Day at Mel's, and how it brings us back to why we do what we do on a daily basis, and why you do what you do as board members. Um, and many of you, um, I just spoke with Wendy today, who signed up for the National Honor Society ceremony, and it's, I was so pleased to hear that there's a good like six of us that are going to that. And I know for a while COVID did throw a curveball into it, and it stunk, and we, we couldn't go to it. But, um, and we're not saying that all nine people should be there, but there are times where, to Julie's point, there's either nobody or one person sitting there. I mean, your life school graduation always draws a decent crowd from the board members, but there's so many other things that are gonna be happening. And there's twelve months where, where you will not be invited to some things, but when we're back to normal, we're, we're pretty much there, the holiday concerts, the moving up ceremonies, uh, you know, there is a ton of events that happen in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. Um, you're gonna be getting a lot of invites over the next couple of weeks, but I really think it grounds us all as educators and lifelong learners, when we attend these events that our kids are at, and teachers are at, and our administrators are at, and you realize why you're voting on what you vote on on a monthly basis, because that's, you know, what makes our school so special. So, you know, to me, never even thought about this until you started talking about it tonight, but that's a goal that's worthwhile to me.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I can't agree more with, with that. I was, I was gonna say about number one, um, with all the... That, that an open dialogue with the community is really, would be, um, more of a superintendent than, because he runs the day-to-day operations of the school district. So if we, as a board, were talking about it, first of all, um, it would be, it would be the president probably answering all the questions, but the questions were really, are really to, to the superintendent, because that's what the people are really caring about. Um, I think sometimes we, we all have to remember we're a board, we're not a council. There's a difference between, like, the borough council, the elected borough council, and an elected board. I think there's a, there's a fundamental difference in that, that, um, even though the council at the same time has, it's a manager, strong manager, so the manager should be doing that, some of that stuff. But, um, I do, I do think we need to be out there, I think people should know who we are, um, and, and what our position is, but I think, um, that, that just, um, I, I, I'm much more interested in us working as a board together.
Mark?
Number three is fine, but I don't want us to lose sight that we were discussing about trust amongst ourselves and, and understanding. So I, I think that is maybe number four. Just battle up with that topic when I'm at the listening.
Mike?
Going back to number three, a few just thoughts. So first, Julia, uh, I agree that it's nice if we could, it would have been nice if we could say, hey, who, who goes to this event, just to make sure that all of that's covered. However, we can send email to the whole board, and we can respond all, you know, that we violate the assumption, right? So idea is good.
Give myself one, I prefer. Like, we, I think there's just opportunities where we can communicate in a different manner. Like, it doesn't have to be an email, like, how many of you have giant group chats on your cell phones? Like, hey, is anybody going to this in two weeks? Because let's make sure at least two of us are there.
Giant group chat would also violate the assumption, yeah, if we have a giant group chat.
And on my personal cellphone?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And, and as long as there's, there's, less than four, otherwise you're good, but it's, it, it even, Natalie says it's not a good practice, though. Um, yeah, yeah, continue.
So that's first. Secondly, I agree, there's a goal to make sure we're attending that. I also want to say that I agree with John, that I think it is a good idea to have open forum at least once a year. I, I, I don't want to take away from administration, John, uh, administration does anyway, but I think it's good for the board and for the public to be able to have this, um, for the lack of a better word, rating opportunity.
Well, let me ask you this, because this has come up. What would that look like? That, that open forum, what, what would it, you know, walk me through, what your ideas are to them?
Um, not much diff... As simple as, like, a monthly meeting without agenda. Uh, because I know there are some people who say, I have something to say, but I don't want to sit here for two hours, and I don't know when you guys end. Sometimes it takes five minutes, sometimes two hours.
So it would be like a meeting, like we're doing now, and just have the people out there, and we address them? Maybe a little less formal, I guess?
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Ryan?
How about creating a Google form and filling in events, and then all of them access to the Google form? We're not emailing each other, and everybody can, like, it stays on its own, and it's like, and we can access, like, we access all the documents that the administration provides for us.
So, we, so, we typically do inform the board of upcoming events, I mean, we've been doing that lately. The school play's coming up, the National Honor Society's coming up. You'll get a list of all the graduation and moving up ceremonies, all the holidays, so you'll get them strategically throughout the year, um, but you'll also get them every month. We do a superintendent monthly report that has all the events in them every single month. So, I, you know...
I think so.
No, no, let, let Julie finish. No, no, we can go, I'm not trying to make, like, read it.
No, what I'm trying to say is the Honor Society, people can put their names on those, and then if the moving up ceremony, you can say, okay, there's...
Oh, okay, I, yeah, so what I'll do is, I get a Wendy, create a Google form, and you could all have access, and she could put the events in, and you could plug her name to it.
Yes.
Got it? There you go.
And then everybody can see where, who's going where.
Yeah, that's easy enough, gotcha. I misunderstood, you apologize.
And that's good, and that, that we're not having the, the meeting, we're just filling out a board.
And Vlad, as a follow-up question, may I, your idea about an open forum? Would the administration and superintendent be there, or is this just a board of ed?
Probably not, but you'll be there, of course, you're part of the... Probably not, but you'll be there, of course, you'll manage the boards.
And? Okay, Julie, can I say something?
But then would that be, I must admit that's something that I would put as a goal. I feel like that, like, I hear you. And I appreciate what you're thinking, like, if, if there's a concern about the administration's communication with the community, then that's a conversation that should happen with the administration, not with us.
I didn't say there is a concern about administration's communication to the community. There is a concern about the board's communication.
When they ask us a question or the, or the community sends an email, it's addressed by the board president or the board president and the board vice president. So opening up a forum like that, it wouldn't be answered by us as a board anyway. It would either go to Gina, whomever the president is, or administration. So I don't, I don't know if that's productive.
I'm gonna have to agree with Julie.
I, I agree with what Julie, I agree with what Julie is saying. I don't wanna forfeit though the opportunity to have that conversation. So just like there's a time where the police will meet on a Saturday, and I'm not saying on a Saturday, but the police will meet on a Saturday, you know, for coffee.
For coffee, the coffee.
Right, for the public to come in. I think may, I believe mayor is also doing that. Perhaps there should be one or two times a year where the administration, the superintendent and assistant superintendents have the opportunity or give the opportunity for the residents to speak to them.
He, he's, good, once again, with, with coffee. These are not my goals. These are board goals.
No, no, I, I understand.
Like, these are about you and the board. Not, I, wholeheartedly, I'm all open for coffee and talking to people, but these are not my goals. This is about the board and what you feel. I mean, I think you're, I, I am concerned with the statement, or not concerned, but I just don't think an open forum with the community is a beneficial board goal. We have a meeting, we have several meetings a month and where there's ample opportunity for people to speak if they have a question, whether it's a short meeting, a long meeting, they can stay home, they can write in, they can call in, and it's not happening and it's okay. And then I get that our meetings are not that exciting, but, or maybe they are to some people. Uh, but I think we really should stick with, you know, the communication and trust piece, if that's where you wanna go, back to your point, but this is not, these aren't my goals.
Okay, good. Oh, Jen?
Um, I won't push it too much for the goals and all of that, but I just wanted to mention that, so it's not, I don't think administration communication issue or anything for this open dialogue. Um, but more of the view, even if we can't answer the questions ourselves, those members that are the president or vice president acting, um, we're there to engage with them so that they can express their concerns, because we don't often get that opportunity for people to just express whatever concerns, possibly long-term plans that they'd like to see for this district. I'm not talking about entertaining people coming in to say, oh, I'm having a problem with my teacher and all of that. That's a building issue, go through the proper chains and all that. But what do they want to see for the future of the education in our board? So that was, I will comment on that.
Julie?
Still think that goes back to a chain of command. You know, if someone wants to see something for their child's education, they start with their child's teacher. And if they don't get what they're looking for, they start with their birthday principal. And then they move to the assistant superintendent, and then to Mr. Norcia. If they have a concern about what is happening financially, they reach out to our assistant VA or RFA. Listen, I get conversations with people all the time, whether I'm at the gas station, Dunkin' Donuts, the bagel shop. People ask me questions all the time. And my response is, thank you so much for sharing that. I highly recommend you reach out to whomever it is, like, I, I pick up my son, my sons once a week and I get to drop them off twice a week. People stop me all the time. I think this is going back to one, the third goal, is we make ourselves more available and they know who we are. I promise you, people are going to find you. Like, all the time, I get stopped everywhere. I got stopped today in CBS picking up candy for ninety. Someone stopped me, said, thank you so much for doing what you're doing. Hey, I'd love to share X, Y, and Z with you. And I said, thank you so much. Um, please reach out to, and I shared whoever the person was, happened to have been the child's, the building principal. And it was about making sure that, like, there was more opportunities for parent involvement. Reach out to your, your, your child's principal. So I think as we start to be more present in the community as a board, I think those are opportunities are going to arise.
Is there candy?
What?
Is there candy?
I always have candy. I don't know if you mentioned it, but there's always candy there.
All right, well, I gotta tell you, I'm not a fan of just opening up a meeting to having discussions. It's a slippery slope. There are other ways for them to communicate with us, emails, grab us at ShopRite, Julie said. Um, and our pictures are, our pictures on the website, I mean, they wanna come and find us, it's not that hard. But I think the three goals we have are, are, are good. I think that they are things there before. Now, now, that was, we didn't do that. Oh, four? Oh, yeah, you're right, okay. So the four we have, I, I think that they're achievable, they're reasonable. I think if we achieve them, we will improve a great deal in the way we operate. So are we good with these four goals like this for, I would, you might add something, or?
The, the fourth goal is certainly good. Uh, should have discussed, like, how to do this. It's a, it, it, right now it sounds more like a slogan. Yeah, that, that's great, how to process.
I don't know. But I, you're right, I mean, it, it is kind of a, is overarching and broad goal. So how do we do that? Um, I guess, you know, Julie, go ahead again, I do.
Sorry, don't stop talking today. Um, so we, I think we've all said at one point or another that, you know, from COVID, we really missed out on the opportunities to have working sessions. And I think that having that meaningful dialogue during a working session is going to give us more opportunity. And I'm not saying that only every month, I think that, but if we can, you know, aim for a certain number a year, and if there's more, great. But that's gonna give us a bit more purposeful discussion than maybe me asking a ton of questions at a board meeting and Joe responding to those questions. You know, so that, that's not necessarily purposeful, because we're talking about those things that we're already, we're voting on. But if we're talking about them honestly and openly prior to just having to vote on them, I think it's a bit more meanings, meaningful dialogue.
Rita?
Are we gonna decide how many working sessions we should have and put that in a goal? Or so that we're all on in agreement?
Yeah, that was an example. I, I was coming up with something.
Because I think you're gonna create the idea of working session, let's make an agreement now and, like, at the end of the year, oh, wait, we have this goal, let's have long-term question calling.
So I think, I'm sorry. I think we're digressing away from the true spirit of the goal of communication and trust and working with each other even while we disagree. And I think that just because we add more meetings doesn't mean that we're gonna work well with each other. I think we have to, the goal should be about building communication and trust and fostering positive relationships so that we lead by example. And it's not about how many meetings you have, it's about through your actions. And oftentimes, you know, our meetings could get contentious at times while they're two hours long and people don't wanna stay. But a meeting really should only be thirty minutes. And we all walk out and we're like, that should have been a thirty-minute meeting, but we made it a two-hour meeting. And it's not about rushing over, making it quick. But I mean, we just passed a hundred and twenty million dollar budget. We decreased the taxes and we were there for almost two hours. You know, we really, you know, we've answered, you know, questions and questions and questions and questions and questions and questions. So it's not that questions are bad by any means, but I think that's where, you know, some angst comes in at times at meetings between board members or administration or the community. Um, not pointing fingers at anyone, but it's, it's really about maybe picking up the phone, calling each other, talking, um, before the board meeting, before we have these. That'll build the trust and the, and the positive relationships so that when you go into a meeting, it's not that, you know, maybe distrust or something. So I think that is so, if, if you have that trust and positive working relationship, you'll see so much more get accomplished and maybe you'll see more people at board meetings.
Rita, Hannah?
Yeah, I feel like talking on the phone is great and you talk to one person, you call, you talk to another person. At the time, you finish the one concern, you spend like, like that. I just feel like working sessions would be great because then I can ask, why do we think this? Or we can have a discussion about things before. I think we should have more working sessions so we can communicate with one another and have an open dialogue. And then, and I feel like we should commit to some among every other one or something like that. So that, it's not every month, I gather, it's too much. But if it's every other one, then you can discuss things with one another.
Mark? Yes, this basically has to do with the number four, and that's why I'm bringing myself. The board has developed a mentality over the past, since I've been on the board, I'd say, past ten, ten years about that asking questions has to do with mistrust. And it's not that way. And I think we have to divorce ourselves from that mentality. Asking questions is not saying that we don't trust somebody's decision. Asking questions is trying to get further information. And I think that would be a big step in the right direction in having the board work together, in having the board understand each other and developing the natural trust amongst us.
I, I don't disagree with you. I disagree with you to this extent. It's not the questions, it's the way they're often asked. They're accusatory. Sometimes I feel like I'm watching cross-examination when people are talking to other board members, to the superintendent. So it's not asking the questions, it's the, I don't understand why. How about, how about we take it down a notch? People get passionate, people get upset, I understand that. But to me, if you go back and watch the meetings, and I'm guilty of it, everybody here is guilty of it, you have a tendency to, to, to get in a zone and then it's just the questions are, just seem like they're, they're just, um, accusatory and negative. So it's not just, it's not because the administration or board doesn't like questions, it's the way the questions are asked. And that's all I'm saying is, there's no reason to pound on the table, there's no reason to, to raise your voice and get hysterical and, and tell people that, that they have a particular prejudice against this person. That's not it, but that's what happens a lot, all right? And, I'm not saying you, okay? I'm saying everybody has a tendency to raise their voice for no reason.
So over the last ten years.
This is, yeah, this has been going on for years, so, um, and that's, that's my opinion. Um, and as far as, you wanna have a meeting just to have a meeting, just so we can all get together? That's, that's what it sounds like to me. We're, well, somebody said we have to set a certain number of meetings, okay? And that is, um, that, that seems counterproductive. Then we're gonna have to have a meeting because we're scheduled for Thursday. We don't have anything to talk about, we have to find something for a meeting. So I don't necessarily agree with that. Julie and then Rita?
I'm gonna take it back, I think you made a really good point. And, um, maybe rather than spend time having another meeting, we spend time actually getting to know one another and knowing why we're passionate about what we're passionate about. And why, listen, we can also guarantee why we're at the board according to, you know, how we were going to share that with the community so they could vote for us to be on the board. But now that we're all here, let's talk about why we're passionate about why we chose to be trustees and what drives our passion. Because we've all come from really different walks of life and we all, you know, are volunteering our time for a variety of reasons. And I don't actually, mm, with the exception of Joe, I'm not really sure I know what anybody's, you know, why anybody's sitting here. So maybe that's where we need to start.
Rita?
I think we need, I just feel like we get on the jump on Friday and I don't make freedom of my life, which is fine. I don't care if it's on lockdown, because I, I think they're my child. And then by the time I have like questions, I Tuesday, I have seven questions, Thursday is already the meeting. I feel like if we have a week before, we have a work session, we can talk about some stuff that I don't understand. Especially since I'm a new board member, I'm still learning a lot about how the dish is run and I have lots of questions, so I feel like I don't understand things. And once I understand things, it'll take years for me to understand everything that I would like to understand. I think if you have work sessions, it will help us to build a relationship where we can talk about these. So I see different people's point of views about certain items on the board.
I just, I just added to the question, um, sorry, to the goal. Board of Ed will work on building cohesive working relationships with each other in and out of board meetings.
So that, that's the goal, and again, it's kind of general, but I think what I'm hearing is there are some people who like to have a work session on occasion. Um, I, you know, and we used to have though, but we used to have a lot more meetings when I first got on the board. We were meeting two, three times a week sometimes. And that was insanity and it was totally, we were told by his school boards, it was bad practice, so we cut back on it. Um, so what does the board wanna do as far as more meetings? Or do we wanna have one work session every two months? Do we wanna just have a retreat, like on a, on a Tuesday night? We can all just get together for dinner and, you know?
I think that's a wonderful idea, I really do. I think having a retreat, getting together for dinner, having a retreat that's not a school board retreat, something fun to get to know each other is a wonderful goal. I think forcing meetings on a calendar to say that we're gonna work better together is, it's just a little unsettling. I don't think that's the answer, is to force people to go to a meeting. Um, when we don't even have an agenda, no one is about, there's a need for a work session, we'll have a work session. But the right important goal is to say that we're gonna have X number of work sessions to do it, I think is, is counterproductive.
All right, so the last goal, the board will work on building cohesive working relationships with each other in and out of board meetings. And what I'll do is I think that Nick and I talked about maybe making one of those. We could even do a breakfast meeting on a, on a, on a weekend, we could do an early dinner meeting and just, it'll be a retreat, it won't be a meeting necessarily, but it'll be a retreat. And we can, we can get to know each other a little bit better and hopefully get past some of the things that have been holding us back. So, and Vlad?
Uh, can we have a camera show what's on the screen? So just, just so the public will watch this video.
Oh, okay, yeah, can you, uh?
You wanna open up the screen? I'll put it up on the website too tomorrow.
Yeah, but just, if anybody's watching, they can look at it, so leave up there for a minute.
There's no one watching. Don't, don't, uh, check my comments.
That's your, by the semicolon. Let me get that up. Okay, um, all right, so these are the board goals. I'll talk to Nick about putting together a retreat in the next six weeks or so. And I think, does anybody have a last closing comments? No? Okay, in that case, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Start moving.
Second, oh, wait a minute, hold on a second. Oh, sorry? Oh, with diamonds. Right, come on up.
Wow, it's so lucky. Craig Miller, Ryan Polteris. Um, I think of you guys as my extended counsel from the borough council. Because you guys operate some pretty much the same way. I feel like every monthly meeting, you have a voting meeting. And maybe that should change to like a first reading, to a, to a second reading or something like the council does. I'm not trying to put two together. But I also find a lot of times sitting down on this side, is that at a meeting, we're asking questions and questions and questions. For you guys, you see all the work we've done. We should be asking a lot of questions and I find the board is doing it, which is driving the means to have a rep, in my opinion. I agree, you should done, we've filed two and a half. You know, like the board, like the, uh, budget meeting, bringing in decrease. Yet that was a two-hour, like you said, two-hour meeting because we're asking questions, moving on questions, moving on questions. And then we're arguing, well, I didn't get this, or I didn't see this, or whatever. This has been going on a long time, and I'm not trying to take anything here. One thing I would like to see changed or modified maybe is the time limit on board meetings. I can just say to the general public, a time limit. You guys really don't need a time limit. By the time you're done with the subject, you may have another book or in your arms up. Maybe extend it or have a chair extended if needed. I enjoy coming here. I don't like arguing. I mean, you know, TV a seventeenth week. But I just think a lot of times you argue in between and the questions in between is maybe drawing people away from here. If you wanna be involved, they seem to see. I'm gonna hold that.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, any other members you need to get, nobody, right? Electronic lane? All right, so motion to adjourn.
Over.
Director. All with favor? Thank you very much, Mike.